Welcome to the Titusville City Council Meeting of September 26, 2017 at 5:30. We have a quorum, so I will call this meeting to order. First order of business is the invocation. I do not see a minister. If you will join me in a moment of silence. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I didn't see anybody kneeling, did I? No. Oh, good. We first order of business is special recognitions and presentations. Mr. City Manager, you want to introduce them?
Yes, sir. The first agenda item, I believe the presenter is not present, so I'd recommend to council that Agenda Item 4B is ready to go. If you would take a vote and go ahead and switch that agenda item to be the first one heard.
For B, to be the first one, or do we take the other one out?
I would like to leave it in until maybe the presenter will arrive.
Do I have a motion to make 4B first?
I would make that motion. Actually, I would do the motion to hold off on hearing anything on 4A until the presenter's present.
Okay. Both of those things? That's fine.
I have the second one.
So only the second one?
Only the second one.
All right. That's all right. Have a motion, a second, any discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Passes unanimously? All right. B.
Yes, sir. Item 4B is the OPEB, which is Other Post-Employment Benefits Employee Trust Impact Study Plan. We have John as a representative of Foster, Foster, to give you a update. Council ask in August if we could get a presentation to help council better understand how the actuarial study was arrived at.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. John Bart, Senior Actuary with Foster and Foster and Fort Myers. I've done quite a bit of work in the retired health program throughout my career, going through helping clients study benefit changes, the impact, and also giving you some thoughts as to going forward, what's going to be changing in the accounting for these benefits. I'm going to talk about that a little bit because accounting for these benefits are going to change come Monday, the next fiscal year, the beginning. So we're right on the cusp of a change, and I think you need to understand how that change is going to be reflected with these benefit amounts. So I'll give you a 30-second understanding of what we do as actuaries and what we're required to do to measure these retired benefits, health benefits. They're very similar to pension. In essence, they're promises in the future to active employees and to current retirees. And basically, right now, let's say that someone has a $500 maximum benefit, they're not quite at 500 perhaps, but that's a promise that you will pay $500 per month, just like a pension, for as long as they live. The way the accounting rule says, we take the present value of all those promises, using the assumptions set forth in your valuation. And to give you a perspective, the valuation, the last one that was done, which is the basis for the study, was October 1, 2015. The 2016 is in process, but that's the last valuation that was done. The discount rate that we value all those liabilities was four and a half percent. I want to keep that in mind because that was a change. So all these promises are in the future. We discount them by interest, mortality, and whether the person's going to work long enough to actually earn them. Very similar to pensions. So we come up with that study, and as you know, if you've seen your evaluation report, you have a required contribution, and this is an accounting terminology, of perhaps three and a half million dollars because they say you must accrue these benefits for people even though you're not paying the cash for them now, just accrued accounting. You may pay out in cash for all these subsidies that you have and for other benefits, let's say a million and a half dollars. These are approximate numbers from the last valuation. So if I'm telling you three and a half million is your cost, and you're putting cash contributions out the door, a million and a half, you have a $2 million accrued liability each year that just adds to your liability on your balance sheet. As of the end of 16, 9/30/16, that accrued liability was about 10 and a half million dollars. So that is what you've already expensed, is on your books, you just haven't paid the cash. So now we get, any questions so far, because I'm leading up to the study? Now we're saying, well, GASB 45, I'm going to give you two numbers. GASB 45 is the basis of your current valuation and how we did the study. That is how your expense is done today. 10/1/17 fiscal year beginning, GASB 75 is effective. I'm going to highlight a couple of key differences because they're really key differences. But right now, GASB 45, and looking at your impact, we looked at the group that was in May, you rescinded the $500 cap. It's okay, they had a cap, we're going to rescind it. What's the impact of that? At this point in time, let's call it just a snapshot date. This is okay, $500, no $500 cap, under GASB 45, as of 10/1/15, that will increase your liability by, you saw about 11 and a half million dollars. And if anybody, I have a handout which may, if everybody's familiar with the trend rates of why that number gets so high, the healthcare inflation.
Also for the graph in there.
I decided to graph it to say.
John, do you have one more?
I think I have one more.
There you go.
Thank you.
In the graph, you can see illustrates a line that says, here's what the $500 per month had capped, and if we remove the cap, the top line, if we did that for every participant in Groups 1 and 2, you would see something similar to that. And as math majors, I would call the area under the curve is what makes up the 11.6 million. But you can see the trend rates start high, although your inflation may be even higher the last couple of years than what we predicted. These trend rates are not our assumptions necessarily. We use a model developed by the Society of Actuaries called the Getson Model, which develops a long-term perspective for retired health benefits. It's based upon the economic model developed by a professor, and it's used by pretty much all the actuaries doing retired health. It's the same model we do for the state of Florida, where the retired health actuaries for the state of Florida, we use the same model, they modify the first three to five years based upon their analysis, and then they use a long-term Getson Model after the five years. We don't have enough data for you to be specific for the first five years, so we use the general trend rates, starting at 8.75. We do that for every participant, Tiers 1 and 2, it came up to 11.6. The expense increase, you can see, is 590. Here's the difference under GASB 45 and 75. GASB 45 says you take that expense, and you can amortize it over 30 years, similar to what you do in a pension plan, right? You amortize it over 30 years, like a house mortgage with payroll growth or whatever, using your assumptions, it would increase your expense by $599,000 that year. Your cash flow probably was not even projected to go up because nobody was at the cap yet. The cash flow would increase about two or three years later when they started to be beyond $500. So you can say, our cash doesn't go up for a couple of years, our expense goes up 590. Now, we also looked at the impact, and we believe we understood it correctly, of a certain group, and this was in our impact exhibit 1, the D, the section D, where there were certain retirees who were not included in Tiers 1 and 2 because they did not elect to retire at the cutoff date in '14, they elected to stay and drop. And we were asked, well, what's the impact if they had really been able to obtain the Tier 1 benefits and remove the cap on the Tier 1 benefits? In essence, to treat them just like the Tier 1 people, you know, 100% employer subsidy, no cap. What's a delta improvement? You can see under our studies, the present value of those benefits is 2.3 million. And when I say present value, it's not to say like that 11.6. You're going to pay a lot more cash out than 11.6 over their lifetime because that's a discounted number. You may be paying $20 million or so. This 23 people is 2.3 million. Now, that is composed of two things, and I want to make clear it was your intention to look at both of those. One is they go from maybe a 50% subsidy, 50% employer paid, to 100% and then no cap. It's like a two-step improvement. That's why it's relatively large, a two and a half million. If you said, keep them at the current level they're at, $8 per year service, or 50% of the employer pays subsidy, which is ever greater, and keep them at that, but then just raise the cap, remove the cap, that impact would be much smaller. A lot of this impact, the two and a half million, is going from the $8 all the way to the $500 and then removing the cap. That's a key difference, but that's what we were asked, treat them like a Tier 1 and 2 person. So we also studied, if you actually move Tier 3 people and just remove the $500 cap because right now they're at 50% or $8 per year service, subject to $500 cap, just remove the cap, they're still at the $8 per year service or 50% of the active premium, but still they have a cap. We would just remove the cap.
Sir, do you mind if we ask questions as we're going along here?
Yes, yeah.
Oh, thank you. I'm lost.
Yeah.
Okay. So let me say what I think you're saying.
Okay.
And then tell me if I'm right or wrong. I think what you're saying is, say, I have 10 employees, and those 10 employees, if they retire today and the cap is removed, I am figuring out the amount, first their life expectancy correct, and then I'm figuring out the amount that I would pay to them over that life.
Yes.
So person retires at 60, and we expect them to die at 70?
85.
Okay.
Yeah.
We're hoping.
Yeah.
But for mathematical purposes, let's take a 70 just because it's easier. And we're saying, in that 10 years, this is how much is going to cost us, correct?
Right, each year.
Per year, this is how much has gone and cost us, correct?
Well, I went back. For that individual.
Right, for this individual.
From 60 to 70, each year you're going to pay so much, then we present value those 10 years of payments into the present value number.
So basically, what I'm doing is I am paying for 10 years in year 1?
No, no. This present value, you present value all those payments. Let's say you're going to pay $5,000 a year.
Okay.
And if we discount it, you pay $5,000 for 10 years, the discounted value may be $45,000.
Okay. So the discounted value would be 45,000?
Present value. The $45,000 is kind of what we're presenting here. It's the lump sum value of all those future promises.
So basically, our liability is $45,000, although it hasn't accrued yet.
It has not accrued yet. You would accrue it and then start expensing it. Now, after 10 years?
Right.
Unless you amortize it over 10 years, all you're expensing will equal $50,000 at the end. It may start off small, but you add interest on that $45,000. Your expense each year is the interest cost because you discounted it, so you're adding back the expense back into it. So for your example, your present value is $45,000, over a 10-year period is fully expensed. We're going to fully expense all your benefits paid, $50,000.
Okay.
So that $5,000 interest is going to be expensed along the way.
Okay. I understand that.
Now, if you amortize over 10 years, that's a good example.
I know.
They allow 30 years, which is like drawing out forever. So that is, these numbers kind of represent that present value of a one-time payment. Let's say you could go to an insurance company and say, you know what? We have this cap, we're going to pay $500 max, you pay the inflation.
And I wouldn't take that, do you?
Well, no. If there was an insurance company out there that says, like, we did the math, we look at your assumptions, we'll take on all the inflation above 500. We're going to charge you 11.6 million based upon all our assumptions. You give them 11.6 million, if everything works out, everybody's happy.
Okay.
That's what this present value represents. It's a one-time payment discounted to pay for that benefit improvement. It's a benefit improvement, it's a one-time payment, but you can see under the current GASB 45, you don't expense that today.
And how do we handle it?
Huh?
How do we handle it? If I'm not expensing it today?
Under GASB 45, you amortize it over 30 years.
I know.
So you start expensing 590 per year, and then it gradually.
Increases.
Well, yeah, because you said 599, that's a level amount, 600,000, for 30 years, you're going to be expensing $18 million by the time you die, right? If we had no payroll growth, that's the answer, 600,000 per year for 30 years, and told you you're going to pay $18 million worth of benefits. That's under the current, and these represent the current big numbers. Now, what you need to know is, these numbers, if we measured them today, as of 9/30/17, and took a snapshot, based upon the new premiums that are going to be paid, which may be higher than we projected, these, and using a different interest rate, we can't use 4.5% anymore.
Right.
We've got to go down. GASB is dictating the discount rate to use to measure these, the 20-year AA municipal bond rate. As of June, it was about the 3.9. On June 30, 2015, it was 3.06. Now it's getting close to 4 because it, but it's not 4.5. Guess what? If I measure this at 4, these are about 6%, 7% higher, just by that. If I measure it with your new mortality tables, it's another 5% to 10% higher. Here's what you have to be aware of, that come 9/30/17, I call it Saturday, but let's say your next fiscal year, GASB 75 says, look at your total liabilities in the program. They were about 50-some million dollars when we did the last study. You've now added about 12 million to that. If you had another couple of million and brought through 9/30/17, you're up in the, you know, $70 million range. What they say is, when you adopt GASB 75, you have no options, you look at that number, and then you say, how much have you booked so far? I told you about 10 and a half million. Maybe you, by the end of this fiscal year, maybe that's 12 million. So I got 70 million and 12 million. When they say you adopt it, you book the whole incremental amount on your balance sheet, and now you're $58 million poor as a city, which is happening across the country. You book the entire liability, and then the only expense is the interest cost because everything's expense. You sign your balance sheet, and you just pay interest on it. So you're going to have a big hit come Monday, and it's a question of how big that hit is, but the hit will encompass everything that's going to be on these sheets.
You're making me wish I'd paid more attention to accounting.
Well, they changed the rules so much that.
It would help.
It would help. They keep changing how you do this, so everybody has to go back to school. And, you know, us poor actuaries just kind of have to learn. I know more accounting than I know actuarial work now, so it's.
John, I think what needs to be pointed out is the reason why these accounting practices are being implemented is to give a true picture of the financial conditions of municipal governments and governments, because these have never been recorded in such a fashion, so you can't figure out the true financial condition of the city.
Right, and that's exactly why the, you know, cities and states, you saw the Wall Street Journal article, there's $690 billion of liabilities across the country in public plans that are not being reported as liabilities. And that's a whole, it's very similar to pensions. If I recall this, what they did in pensions two years ago with 67 and GASB 68, they photocopied that, changed the numbers, and put it on retired health. The arithmetic is almost identical. Fortunately for actuaries, I learned it once, and GASB 75 is very, so they say, all your liabilities, just like pensions.
Yeah.
You had to book whatever wasn't on your balance sheet. Fortunately, the difference on pensions is you have a big funded plan, right? You already have a lot of assets put aside, and you funded that plan by requirement. In this plan, you have about $2 million toward it, our last recollection, $2 million toward the 50 million or 70 million, so it's.
So basically, you're saying, this is the amount that we need to put aside, we would have to put aside each year to fund a pension plan.
The, well, let's say that.
Well, not.
Let's hypothetically say it's 70 billion, $70 million.
Okay.
You adopt GASB 75, you book 70 million, that's on your balance sheet, that's a one-time event.
Okay.
And the only thing that changes is things that happen during the year. You accrue more benefits, you pay interest, and your expense goes up, and you pay benefits out, and you whittle down that 70 billion or 70 million over 20 or 30 years.
Which basically could go up or down.
Well, yes, let's say that.
Well, it's more likely to go up than down.
Well, it's more prone to go up for a couple of reasons. One is, people will live longer than we think sometimes, and the inflation rate for healthcare is, we use our best educated guesses based upon the economists and what they tell us and what we gather in the healthcare. You can see by experience, that's, you know, your pre-age 65 is going up more than that, maybe double digits. So if it goes up 12% and we assumed 8, guess what? We have an actual loss the next year, just like pensions. You have an actual loss that you will start expensing over a very short period of time, increasing your expense.
Okay.
So I know, I'm not giving you a lot of good news here. There's, I'm looking for ways to say, why would this number be smaller?
Well, we'll take any good news you have.
Well, here's a thought. I want to make sure that that group that we call in Part D is what you intended to do is give them the 100% paid without a cap, or to keep them at the $8 and 50% paid, because it makes a big difference if that was the impact. Makes a big difference on that 2.4 number.
John, I think the only, council's only decision was on the first two tiers, and that was to lift the $500 cap completely.
Yes, that was a $500 cap to remove all of them. Now, what if, if I was asked, and I've done a lot of this where we carved up benefits, we've improved, and retired health is a tricky thing, much trickier than pensions in a way. Retiree health is a tricky thing, much trickier than pensions, in a way. Because pensions, you can have a COLA on it, fixed COLA. Even CPI doesn't go crazy. Retiree health, that inflation is just so hard to predict. All the experts are wrong most of the time. And if you're trying to say, well, we want to help the retirees, is there a way that we can help them, but do it in a financially managed way? And my first response would be, we'll look at the cap and improve it, but don't keep it up open-ended. You could bump it up to six or seven hundred dollars a month, and people would be very happy, but it will also buy you several, several years into the future before you would have to address it again. For example, what would that eleven million be? If you said, I want a six hundred dollar cap for tiers one, two. It's between probably two to two and a half million dollars, based on this study. What if we went to seven hundred dollars? That eleven and a half becomes close to four million.
So...
How many years does that go out? Well, for a post-sixty-five person, it goes out quite a ways. For someone who's fifty-five, I don't know what the premium... If the premium's going to be five fifty next year, seven hundred will still take care of you for several years. But if you have somebody retiring at forty-eight or fifty, that's a lot of years to pay that active premium, and it's bound to be above seven hundred at some point in the future. Well, that would have been my recommendation to clients, I'd say, well, rather than just open up to endless, because the accountants and auditors under GASB make you book all that future inflation. And they say, you have to make an estimate of what it is, and you have to book it today of what the inflation is twenty, twenty-five years from now, and just present value everything back. And I'm saying, well, I don't know what it is. Why don't we just play by year? Play five years at a time.
I hope you die.
Three or four, five years at a time. That's what corporations typically have done, is they cut it back, and then they improve it. They have to improve it in a non-systematic way. Auditors are very sharp with that. They can't say, every three years, I'm going to improve it to where it was, because then the auditors will say, well, you just... You have no cap if you improve every three years on the dot. But you can say, we will look at it every four to five years and see where we're at.
And that works...
Financially, you may be a lot better five years. It could be a lot worse. But you kept the control on it, and you virtually have protected the retirees for that time period the same way if they had no cap or a seven hundred dollar cap.
And I think... I'm going to speak for everybody, but I think... I hope nobody objects. I think we were all trying to do something for the retirees, because they've done so much for the city.
Mm-hmm.
And for some of them, they've taken some financial hits over the years when we were having problems and struggling. So I think the idea was, we were hoping to be able to do something for them. That being said, this would be my suggestion, Mayor, is maybe we have a workshop, and maybe John can explain it to them.
I think that's where we're headed. We're certainly not going to absorb it all tonight. But I did have a question before we go on with that. You said inflation. Is that including the increased costs of healthcare?
Basically, it's the healthcare inflation. It's a separate inflation.
Okay. So you didn't mean CPI inflation. You're talking about just healthcare inflation.
Yes. It's... When you look at that front page, we call it trend rate.
Mm-hmm.
Trend rate slash healthcare inflation is what we bumped these benefits up by, the healthcare benefits.
And Mayor, I'd like to point out that even though we're showing eight, eight-seven-five, eight-fifty, last three years, our city's been tripled or double digits in inflation and premium increases, so...
Recent history would show that exactly what he's saying, that it's going to be hard to predict what the future is because of the rate keeps going up.
It's... Unless you're a giant entity that can swing a lot or have a lot purchasing power, like the state of Florida, but they spend a lot of money managing it, and they can keep it a little bit lower on their self-insurance, but they have a much bigger base, and they've been able to keep the rates a little bit lower. But again, I thought the eight point seven-five was high, but maybe not high enough. And that's the whole point is, we adjust those trend rates every time we do evaluation because we get the new model, and we use those rates. You can see, over time, they're expected to go down. Well, I've been doing this, retiree health, when FAS one oh-six came out in the public sector in nineteen ninety-three, and that was the same thought. We're starting off high, and then we're going to project them to go down low. You know, by the year two thousand, they're going to be down to four percent. And every year, you just kick the can down and say, okay, now it's going to be low way out here. So it doesn't seem to go down like inflation has.
Mm-hmm.
That's what... If somebody has that magic idea of, why is healthcare inflation so high? It's... That's what's baffling, because who's getting the money?
It's not really that baffling, because what has happened is technology that is available now...
Spend more money.
Is so much more expensive.
It's the demand for all these improvements and demand for services.
And then people are living longer because of that better healthcare, and that increases the expenses right along.
Right. And at the end, if you look at the end-of-life expense, is where most of the expense is. And, you know, go to the hospital, you know, if you're in there a couple of weeks, it doesn't take much to run up fifty thousand dollars. But that's... You're right. All the technology, the drugs, and they're just improving it. So sort of like, maybe the healthcare professionals got... They're not getting twelve percent raises. They're getting three or four. But this... Everything else is driving it up. So that's why I'm cautioning you, is that, hey, we measure these numbers using the best estimates. We'll use... When we adopt GASB seventy-five for this year, we'll have to use that best estimate again, a lower discount rate, and you're going to see that number. It's going to be on your balance sheet, and what cities are going to deal with is, what's the impact perhaps on the bond ratings and our ability to borrow money if we have to throw a big unfunded liability onto the balance sheet, where before it was just a footnote? And that's the unknown.
If you will. I'm going to allow a few questions at this point, and then we probably want to look at having a workshop on this, but Vice Mayor, you're up next.
Yeah, thank you. And actually, you kind of segued right where I was going. So if the adoption of this liability, right, so before you could spread it out, now you can't. So you take the whole chunk, but every municipality's taking that whole chunk, barring that there was a policy difference, being that twenty years ago, some cities pivoted to not a generous benefits package on the back end or so on and so on. But for cities that are like size, like policy, we're all going to take this hit at one shot. So relative to bond ratings, I mean, is that going to be a drop across the state because everybody do it? Or is it going to be an accepted practice that these guys just picked up a ton of liability?
It's going to be... It's going to be relative, because I can point out, because we have, I don't know, seventy-five to ninety clients, retiree health clients. And I would say, the minority actually provides a subsidized benefit, like you do. A lot of them just provide access, pure access. The state of Florida, if you're covered by the state of Florida, what's a cap? There is no cap because they don't provide the benefit. All they provide is access. If you retire, you pay the active rate, and at sixty-five, you pay the full Medicare supplement. There's no liability. If you go to different counties and things, all they provide is access, and that's where the differential.
And if I could also point out that one October, we made a policy change for new employees. When they retire, they will have access only now with no subsidy. And we're getting in line with the other communities in Brevard County, as well as the county.
And what we see there, and this has become very common, and Lava became common four or five years ago, once they started to see that this liability is going to have to be measured and booked. A lot of them said, we have to, by state law, we have to give them access, that's state law. And if you retire... If you're medical, like, right now, if you just said, that's all we're going to do for retirees, you still have liability on it, because a retiree may cost fifteen thousand dollars a year, but you only can charge them eight. If the actives are paying eight, you only can charge a retiree eight, but the actuary says, the retiree costs fifteen thousand. That's the implicit subsidy. That's part of the liability you have. You can't walk away from that. That's for... Everybody has that. But normally, when we see that for a county or a city that says, we just have access, their expense is generally between one to two percent on payroll. Yours is twenty-three percent. That's what kind of tells you is that, when you have a subsidy and you provide city-paid benefits, that that cost for retiree health goes way higher than one or two percent. And that's where the relative difference would be. Some people will take very small hits. Some people... Cape Coral, look at their numbers.
We're going to be repeating a lot of this at our workshop, so...
Yeah.
The purpose of tonight was, we made a decision without proper information on it. It was, frankly, it was impulsive on council's part at that point. We didn't know how impulsive, though. So if everybody agrees that we need to have a workshop and get into the details of this, we'll just cut it at this point. And unless somebody has some question that they just have to hear tonight? No? Okay. Mr. City Manager, you will arrange that workshop.
Yes, sir. And John, thanks for traveling up here and presenting the information.
Thank you. We're available to, you know, give you more fresh, up-to-date information based upon nine thirty seventeen, which is, I think, what you're... You'll be wanting. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, we'll go back to letter A. I see...
Yes, sir. The interlocal agreement between the city of Titusville and the North Brevard Economic Development Zone requires that the city review and approve the district budget concerning the expenditures of city funds. The revised two thousand eighteen annual operating budget for the North Brevard Economic Development Zone is in your packet. The original North Brevard Economic Development Zone budget was approved by the North Brevard Economic Development Zone Board on twelve May two thousand seventeen, based on expected tax revenues. We have Mr. Troy Post here to give a presentation to council and answer any questions that you may have about the revised budget.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Thank you for having me here today. I'm Troy Post. Of course, I'm the Executive Director for the Economic Development Zone, and that's one of your tax increment financing districts here. I came before you in May, but I'm coming back to ask your approval for a revised budget. Before I get into that, though, I did want to just pass out, that is our latest newsletter, which goes out electronically tomorrow, and we have some nice news announcements, some of which I think you've attended some of the press briefings on, some other news stories you may not know about. But it's been a very active time for us. We still have a lot of good things to report on. And the other thing I wanted to mention in that regard was, a few months ago, we were asked to join the EDC, the Economic Development Commission, for our county in putting in an application to the International Economic Development Council, which is really the premier economic development agency worldwide that represents over five thousand different organizations in economic development. And we were asked to submit a nomination for our program efforts to this, and we found out last week at their conference in Toronto, Canada, that we won the bronze award. So we're real excited about that.
Congratulations.
And we certainly appreciate the partner that we have in the EDC, and we appreciate the partnership we have with the city council. You have worked very closely with us, and we appreciate our county commission as well, along with the board members that you and the county commission have appointed. With their help, we've been able to achieve some great things and have a lot of promise for the future. So, back in May, I came before you with a proposed budget for the city revenues. The last few years, the increment that we've received from the city that goes to the zone has been fairly small dollar amounts relative to the amount we get from the county side. As you probably know, we get approximately three million dollars annually now from the county. The big driver in that is the Florida Power and Light Facility, which is down in the Port St. John area. Generally, with the city's increment portion, it's been about a hundred thousand dollars, a little bit less. This year, though, and the way we do our process, I should mention as well, we do our budget in concert with what the county does, because we have a county increment that we get along with the city increment. So we generally, in the past few years, have come to the city first with an estimate on what we think the valuation in the zone is going to be and what our revenue is going to be. We do not actually get the final figures until July, when the tax assessor's office sets the final value. The last few years, we've been pretty close to what that estimate was, but this year, we were off. It turned out that there's been a lot of growth in the area, many of the projects that we know about, that we've been able to assist with, but there were a lot of other things that occurred that, just because of the general overall growth in the local economy. So that's a good thing to have. So instead of an amount that was under a hundred thousand dollars, we're looking at about two hundred and, I think, twenty-seven thousand dollars approximately this next year. Our next... Our fiscal year actually starts next week, begins October, goes through September of next year. So we're coming before you today to ask your permission for a revised budget. Hopefully, in your packets, ahead of time, you've got a copy of a spreadsheet that looks like this. If you do not, I've got some copies here today. I'll just call your attention to the very last column. That details how we intend to allocate the monies next year on the different program elements. Up until this year, we've really had most of the city's increment going toward our coworking project, which you may be aware of. It's down on Washington Avenue. This year, though, we'd like to use not only money to go into the cowork space, but also to put money into some of our other program elements. There also, it was pointed out to me by county finance, an interlocal that existed back in two thousand eleven that talked about the spirit of trying to prorate some of the different expense categories that had to do with the zone, once, I guess, we got to the point where the city's increment was a little bit larger. So now we're kind of at that point. So to that end, you'll see that some of the money is actually allocated toward compensation and benefits, and also allocated toward general admin costs, in addition to some of the program elements, most notably putting money into what we call our capital improvement project category, which is to do some lot improvement out at the Commerce Park, which, of course, is located within the city limits of Titusville. So that is what we have to present. I will tell you that one of the discussions I had with county finance in the wake of this was to maybe ask that we get together with the city administrator, city manager, at a point here in the future, so that next year, when we go through the eighteen-nineteen fiscal year proposal, we might have some guidance from the city council on what types of percentages or caps there may be for using the city money to go toward personnel and benefits, or to go for admin, or to go into some of our program elements. We think this is a natural evolution in the process, as the zone becomes a little bit more sophisticated, as it grows with its revenue, both from the county and the city. We think having some kind of an understanding will give us greater direction as we plan what that budget should be. So we'll reach out to Scott, probably in the next month or so, and sit down and start having those conversations, and it could end up being a revised interlocal that we bring back before the city councils for them to consider.
Okay. Are there any questions from staff to Mr. Post? I see none. We need to review, we have reviewed, I assume, and approve the fiscal year two thousand seventeen, eighteen annual expenditure of city funds. I have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. I see none. All who's in favor, say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, like, sign. You got it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item. Item C, sir.
The city historic preservation officer and historic preservation board recommend to the city council approval of the listing of Norwood House, located at seven-one-five Tropic Street, onto the city's local registry of historic places. Building is significant in Titusville's history, and architecture possesses the integrity of location, design, setting, materials, and workmanship, and meets the criteria specified in section twenty-nine, one sixteen of the Historic Preservation Code, ordinance twenty-nine, two thousand and twelve. Our historic preservation officer, Mr. Parrish, is present, and he will make the presentation to council for your acceptance.
Good evening, Mr. Parrish. How are you?
Good. How are you doing this evening?
All right. Go right ahead.
Our usual historic preservation officer, Eddie Browder, and our Pat Chieschi with SME Consultants weren't able to make it this evening, so I'll try and fill in, I can, with this presentation. I'll leave it up to you. Would you like me to go through the entire presentation as they do, or I can give you a summarized version of what has happened? It did go before the historic board, and they recommended...
I think a summarized version would be fine.
Okay.
Anybody object? No objection.
So this property is located at seven-one-five Tropic Street, which is outside of the CRA. It's located west of the railroad track. It's located west of the railroad tracks. This is in the area that zoned UMU, it's urban mixed-use, and it has, it's a, it was a very derelict building. I mean, it was, but we had an investor come in and rehab the entire building, and I'll show you some pictures of what it looked like before and now. And because of the reconstruction of the property, rehabilitation of the property, the property owner wanted to see if they can get it onto the local register, and to give it to some protection. So you can see the before picture there on the top, and there's an after picture there as well. There is some unique circumstances about this building. It looks like it was, from the history, what they were able to research on here, was there were three buildings actually put together, and this was put together around the turn of the century, from different parts of the city to this location. According to sandborne maps, which are insurance maps that were created, used, or back around the turn of the 20th century, there were, the property can be officially established there in 1920. This is, just gives you some general history about the property and who owned it. It did go through several ownerships. Thank you. The Norwood family is, were the people who were, who owned the property, and there was one significant find at the site when they rehabilitated it. They found a, an officer's badge, a police officer's badge there, and they believe it belonged to Mr. Norwood here, who was one of the first, or I think, what I understand, the first police officer in Titusville. And there you, there's the badge that they found. Okay, so he did, I won't go into details here, because I'm not totally familiar with it, but I know they have a lot of history here in the city.
That's all right.
So I'm going to go into why it's significant. So again, here's a before and after picture. There are some architectural details about the building that are worth preserving, and that's why the Historic Preservation Officer recommended approval for its listing. There were some additions to it that were put on the building that were after the fact, but did not degrade the building to the point where it would not be considered historic. And I'm just showing you some pictures of some of the historic details about this building. And so the significance is that the building was put, was constructed in 1920. It was the, being the Norwoods' home, a pioneer family of Titusville who helped establish the Grange Community and Church. It is the home of a Norwood Assistant Police Chief and of the Coast Guard. The building's architecture framed vernacular and is an example of the type of architecture during the Florida land boom. So these are the reasons why it's significant, and the officer recommended its listing. So with that, it did go before the Historic Preservation Board, and they also recommended approval.
Very good. Any questions? If not, I'll accept a motion for, to approve the listing of, which one is it? Here it is. 1715 Tropic Street to the city's historic register.
Yes, sir. Just as a procedural note, what we would like council to do is accept this, and then it'll be on the council meeting at 6:30 as a consent agenda item.
Okay. Change that to accept this.
So I've moved to accept a presentation, the presentation regarding 715 Tropic Street.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Go right ahead.
The city's Historic Preservation Officer and Historic Preservation Board recommended the city council the approval of the listing of the Hill Hotel Apartments located at 422 Julia Street, onto the city's local registry of historic places. Building is significant in Titusville's history and architecture. It possesses the integrity of location, design, setting, material, and workmanship, and meets the criteria specified in section 29, 116 of the Historic Preservation Code, ordinance 29, 2012. And Mr. Parrish is available to give you a summarized presentation of this property.
Okay. So we got the same. So this property, actually, two properties.
Microphone?
Oh, excuse me. So there are two properties. It's 422 Julia Street, and the next one right after this is 428 Julia Street, and they're right next to each other. They're both owned by Mr. and Mrs. Schuler. This particular building used to be a hotel, and it was constructed, according to sandborne maps, again, they can establish as far back as 1903. And these are just additional maps to confirm the existence of this building here. This gives you some general history about the property, of who owned it. Okay. So again, I think this problem, this building was, was going to be recommended for approval to be listed on the local register of historic places, primarily because of its architectural style, and it's worth preserving, but also because of its local history. It was the first hotel, I believe, in the city, or one of the two, but it was closest to the railroad when it was established. And you can see here, there is a, an old brochure from 1926 about the hotel. Currently, the hotel's being, the building is being used as an apartment. And so this was significant by, that the Historic Preservation Officer found about this particular property. You can see that the Hotel Dixie, which was right along the water, which currently does not exist, but it's at the end of Main Street, oh, I'm sorry, Julia Street. So Julia Street was kind of like the main thoroughfare. So when you get off, what he, put it out was, you get off of the train station, you come out, you go to the hotel, and then Julia Street was the main drag, really, through And so he did identify some architectural standards or styles that were worth preserving, including the Spanish mission-style architecture. And these are just some photographs of the surrounding of the building. This area used to be an out, a veranda, and it was enclosed at, around that time as I did not get a chance to go through all the rooms in the interior, only in the interior hallway. The designation would only preserve the exterior of the building, though. So the property is significant because it was built in 1926. It was developed by the Hills, who also owned the grocery store and lunch store next door. It's significant because of its Spanish mission architectural style and its association with Titusville's commercial and residential development. And with that, the Historic Preservation Officer recommended approval. It was brought before the Historic Preservation Board, and they also recommended approval.
Thank you. Any questions of Mr. Parrish? I see none. I need a motion to accept the presentation and recommend to council 422 Julia Street for the listing of, on the city's register of historic places.
So moved.
So moved. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign. Passes unanimously.
And the final one is the Hill Grocery Store located at 428 Julia Street, and Mr. Parrish is available to present this one.
So again, just like the previous one with, at 422 Julia Street, this property is owned by Mr. and Mrs. Schuler. It is right next door. It's on the same parcel. According to sandborne maps, they could establish that it was built in 19, at least, until, from 1903. Again, here are the sandborne maps establishing its existence and some general ownership history of the property. Freddie Hill was the one who constructed the building, and he operated his grocery store out of this building. Again, this is just to establish that Julia Street was a main thoroughfare, again. So the, similar to the last one, the Historic Preservation Officer recommended that it was worth preserving some of the architectural styles of the building. It was a, identified it as masonry vernacular architecture. And here are some photographs of the existing building as it looks today. And there were some minor alterations. The building is significant because of its construction in 1905. It was being developed by the Hills, who also owned the Hill Hotel and Apartments. It's a commercial masonry vernacular architecture, and it is also significant because of its association with Titusville's commercial and residential development. And with that, the Historic Preservation Officer recommended approval, and so did the Historic Preservation Board.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions of Mr. Parrish? See none. I need a motion to accept the presentation and recommend to council 428 Julia Street for listing on the city's register of historic places.
So moved.
A motion. Do I have a second? I do. Have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign. Passes unanimously. Thank you, sir. Good presentation. Next, sir, Mr. City Manager.
Yes, sir. Letters of appreciation that were received by the following employees during the month of September. From the community development was Eddie Galindo, Natural Resource Planner, Mandy Lamouth, Development Office Manager, Preston Yates, Development Technical Manager. From the Police Department, Chantrelle Durden, and from the Public Works Department, Gail Gilchrist, Senior Administrative Assistant.
Thank you, sir. Next item is petitions and requests from the public president. Would anybody like to speak at this time? I see nobody getting up. I, we have completed this meeting right on time, actually, a little, little late, because we will have to convene the next meeting at 20:00. It's a 10-minute break. This meeting is over.